I declare the listening session is now open. What I'm going to do is read a script here, some of you may have heard it, but probably to familiarize everybody with the process, we're gonna read this every time that we start. If you wish to discuss issues with members of the school board and district leaders, you will be able to do so at the listening session. Please sign up to speak at the listening session. Preferably, it would be four hours in advance by submitting the sign up form or calling 651-351-8455. This will ensure we have the appropriate staff members on hand to answer questions and address concerns. The listening sessions are designed to create a more informal setting for residents to engage in conversation with district leaders about issues or concerns. Representatives from the school board, and tonight that's Kathy Bukos and myself, Mike Potajek, along with the superintendent Denise Pontrelli and two of her staff and other district leaders will be available during this session to discuss issues with you. A summary of topics discussed during the learning session or listening session will be shared with the full board and the viewing audience at each school board meeting. Depending on the number of forms submitted, and so far I believe there are two of those, the facilitator may need to set time limits to ensure all topics are addressed during the listening session. And I think tonight we've allotted 10 minutes to each of our speakers. And possibly others may come in, and if they do, we would ask that they sign up with Bart. If many persons wish to speak on the same topic, and I don't think that's the case this evening, the board members present may ask that spokesperson be designed, or designated rather, to allow more time for discussion. And last but not least, while comments and questions on issues are welcome, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in public meetings. Please forward comments regarding individuals to the superintendent. If additional conversation follow-up is necessary, the superintendent will direct a staff member to contact you. So having done that, we'll start with our first speaker. Fred, is it you or Carl?
I don't know the order.
I was Carl.
Carl, if you'll step up and please give your name and address.
Before we start, I just wanted to say, you can use the 10 minutes as you wish. If you would like to speak the entire time, that's your choice. If you'd like to just speak for a couple of minutes and then have question and answer time, it's really up to you how you want to use that time.
Oh, I would, thank you.
And I'll keep the time. I've got 10 minutes, 10, 5, 2, and your thank you.
Thank you. Carl Blondin, I live here in Stillwater, Minnesota, on 617 Semeriz Avenue. I submitted four areas of questions on things that have concerned me and things where I don't think I've seen much movement by the school board over the last two years. Every year we have about 800 students studying French and Spanish at Stillwater Area High School, about another 800 at the two junior highs. We do not have one language lab in the district. That amazes me, especially when I look at all the money we're going to spend, almost $100 million in building on the bond. There's not one cent set aside for a language lab. This board has decided it's going to build a specialty gym for gymnastics and a specialty gym for wrestling. It'll serve about 50 to 60 students on those teams, and that's fine. It's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. I want to know why the board decided it was more important to spend money on gyms for an extracurricular activity than on language labs for world languages that are very important for students who are applying to more competitive colleges and universities. Why did you make that decision?
I'd just like to clarify some terms. Tell us what your concept of a language lab is in the 21st century.
Well, last time I was in, when I'll be honest, was the 20th century. It was a room, and there was audio equipment. And the teacher ran the lab. The students had headphones. And we would hear people speaking in French, or Spanish, or Russian, or whatever language you were taking. And you would listen to it, and questions would be asked and you'd answer. Recordings would be made. And my understanding is, as time has gone on and progressed, the students actually, in many places, get little discs of their answers for review. And it gives the students an opportunity to listen to native speakers so they can listen to men and women, older and younger people, and understand the language and use the language better because of the voice inflections. My understanding is still considered an important part of language instruction. And I've heard that from world language teachers. And there is no consideration whatsoever about putting in a language lab, and I'd like to know why.
Yeah, I think that's really kind of a curriculum question for the administration.
I'd be happy to, I can answer that because I've had some conversations lately. First of all, I think part of what I'm going to speak to is one and three of your concerns, Carl, with the world language. And I think we've had conversations, and I've shared with you, that I value, just as you do, world language and increasing those for our students. I did have an opportunity to talk to Andrea Schuler and a few other of our past and present teachers. And currently, they have a plaza, what they call is a kind of learning area for kids that they can use. And some of the things that you speak about, as known as the language lab of past, are actually things that our students can do right now with their iPads and earphones, those kind of things. They have access to apps that help them hear languages and hear the language that they're studying with native speakers. The curriculum piece of this, part of what you know and that we've shared and we'll spend more time talking about tonight is, with all of the things that have happened in the past, our bridge to excellence, our loving, our bond, have created opportunities for us to look at what programming looks like at actually all levels, but more specifically, the middle school and the high school. And part of that is reevaluating all of our areas of the curriculum, language being included in that. And so increasing those languages, looking at different ways to have access to those languages, having experience with people who are native speakers or experts in that language are all part of what the curriculum, are part of what the language teachers would like to develop. And so really, I think much of what you want is coming, but it isn't coming overnight. And part of what we'll share with you is, we're in month six of looking at all of our areas within Stillwater Area Schools. We're looking at staffing, we're looking at programs, and we're looking at operations to be able to build a comprehensive plan. But that takes some time. And so we'll be partnering with teachers and taking their recommendations is what they'd like to do. Those are things that are not cost prohibitive, don't really have a large price tag, and things that we can accomplish, and some of it they are doing right now.
Thank you. I know you're new here, and you're just on board. But for a long time, things have not been done. And getting to the third issue I raised, is we have 16 sections of French in our school district. That's equivalent of 3.2 full-time teachers. The classrooms are crowded. We started the year with 35, 37, and 38 students in the French III classrooms. I believe a few have dropped. 37 and 41 in the two French II sections, or four sections. And again, I believe some have dropped. But those are very crowded classrooms. Last year, I had a student, child of mine, who was taking French III. There are three sections, 36, 38, and 40 students. That's unacceptable. I look at what we're spending. Essentially, a section of a class is a fifth of a teacher's salary, just under $21,000. If we are going to have 36 students in the class, the amount we're spending per student would be about $578. You look at what we're spending on hockey, it's $1,200 per player. But that's not even accurate, because hockey lasts a third of the year. So during the same time, this district is spending $1,200 of tax money to subsidize a hockey player, it's spending less than $200 on the French student who's in a class with 38 other children. I think that is atrocious. I think it's a scandal. It continues year after year after year. And Denise, this is not so much for you. It's a political question for the decision makers who have sanctioned this spending year after year, the board members. Why can't you put world language education in front of extracurricular activities?
Carl, for some kids, hockey is their connection to the school. World language, and I'm a proponent, but it's not for every kid.
No, but we have 1,600 students in this district studying world languages right now. There'll be 75 playing hockey. I think there needs to be a perspective. You cannot be subsidizing, or I believe it is immoral, to take tax money and subsidize an extracurricular activity by $1,200 when you're not even spending $200 on the student in the classroom. You are charged by law with providing an education, not providing extracurricular activities.
Part of, I think, one thing that we should comment on as part of this is just the numbers that you had shared, Carl. And we checked today and pulled up, and Bob can speak to this too because he's got lots of numbers on this page. But at the high school, we're currently running 14 sections of language with an average of 32.5 students. And at the junior highs, 14 with an average of, class size of 27.6.
I know it's better at the junior highs. It's high at the high schools, even higher this summer before I started asking questions. And I know is the reason I asked the questions is something was done. I received a text message from Tom Lehman saying everyone was riled up about the questions I was asking. Why does it take me, a parent, and a taxpayer to get the administrators to do what they are supposed to do and they are paid to do? This should not have been happening until last week. The administrators should have taken care of this a month before. It was chaos. And the reason it's chaos is people were asleep at the wheel. And I'm under the impression that people are putting academics second. They are not making it a priority. Our school district has, if you look at the graduating class, the fourth largest graduating class in the state. I have not checked the statistics for this year because I'm afraid there'll be worse because East Ridge now has five years of record of sending students to the University of Minnesota. But we rank 12th in high schools from the number of graduates that attend the University of Minnesota over the previous five years. That means eight schools smaller than us are sending more students. Now...
I'm sorry, Carl, time's up. Please know you can call us, email us, meet with us, and we also have another listening session next week.
You too.
Welcome.
Hey.
Let me get Fred's room reminder, you can use the 10 minutes as you wish.
Silence?
If you wish.
First, I want to thank everybody for putting together this format. I appreciate it from both the board and the administration. It's, I think it's much needed to have opportunities for conversation. So I just have a couple of questions. I sent out a little bit of an outline. I'm really excited to have Mr. Perry on board. I'm a little forward to the things we can do. My questions are mainly around technology. So I guess, you know, I just want to get information so I'm better educated around what we're trying to do. Because I am a little concerned that I don't think the district in the last 10 years has done everything it could when it had opportunities to, to keep on track. And I know it's a really, it's a really difficult position, maintaining technology in this day and age. It's a hard thing to do with 20 people in a company. It's a very hard thing to do with 8,300 students and, what, 500 teachers and staff. And I know it's really difficult. So that's why I bring it up, because I don't see anybody else bringing it up, and I want to make sure we're having conversations around it. So I guess my first question is, what's the current budget per child on technology? Do we have a round number on that? I know, Bob, that you had said that, I mean, for the Chromebook initiative, it's $300 because that's the device and some, and that's over, is that over three years? Or is that over each year? Yeah. So, and there's a little bit of technology, infrastructure involved, but that's not all the infrastructure. So do we have a current budget?
In terms of budget per, I haven't calculated it out.
Technology, no.
Per child?
Per child, like, so if we have 8,300 kids, what's our technology budget to cover? Both hardware, I'm sure there's software licensing involved, that type of thing. So it's not something we have, maybe you could follow up on that. I guess, you know, maybe my next question then is a little, I'll probably follow up on that as well. I guess I'd like to know, what's the target? What would we like to see? Because right now, we're running two to one most places, one to one in other places. You know, what would we like to see spent per child? Beyond that, I guess the next question is, how do we want to pay for this? You know, I know, I'm assuming that as we go forward, we want to spend more money on technology because admittedly, a lot of our schools are strapped for infrastructure and walking a tight line. It's, I don't know, do we have, for the new, the new sections in the high school, is the infrastructure that's needed, is that built into the cost of the bond? So the bond's paying for the infrastructure upgrades? It is. And then with the other schools, which have been sort of getting hand-me-downs? I'd like to see that we can make sure that we have money for that. There was opportunity in the last bond to do it, there was support from the public. And maybe Kristin might answer this better. What's the, what's our available cap on non-voter approved levy right now?
A cap on non-voter?
Is there a cap? Do you know what our current, is it, what our current non-voter, is it four? I know that we moved some money over to it last year off of that.
You did, I just happen to have the truth and taxation in front of me. Please continue, and I'll see if I can grab that.
Okay. And then, you know, aside from non-voter approved levy increases, is there any thought of a technology bond? I talked to Tom Nelson last time. I'm not really sure why it wasn't included.
Ask Bill Morris.
Well, I went through all the Morris studies. There was massive support in this district. Let me pull up what number. Okay, do you want me to pull up the numbers? There's 57% of people approved an increase in their taxes to pay for technology infrastructure. 21% approved, you don't believe that?
No, I said I don't recall that.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, it's in the, it's in the Morris. So Morris Leatherman study. How much time do I have?
You have six minutes and 45 seconds.
Okay, well, she looks it up, looks it up, I'll get it for you.
So as I'm, and as I'm trying to, maybe I don't know the specific thread to what you're asking, when you say, when you say non-voter approved, we have a ton of categoricals, you know, like the unemployment and student achievement and all those things, which are essentially non-voter approved?
Yeah.
I mean, so are you talking specifically to what can we do?
Let me word it to you this way. I'll put it in a word problem. If I come to you and say, hey, I'd like to put $300 per student on a non-voter approved levy, Carl's gonna come in and he's gonna say, we already spend this much, why are you want to spend this much on technology? How much are we already spending that would, somebody might pull a number out, so wait a minute, you're already taxing me $450 per student on this. Is that number available? Is that a real number?
I can't, I can't, we would not be able to just unilaterally say this is a non-voter approved levy because there's no category that would allow us to do that in. If we were to do something technology-wise, or capital projects is how it would be referred to, we would need voter approval to do that.
Okay, okay.
So essentially, is the cap, what is the cap? The cap is zero if specifically talking to capital, a capital type of project. Because we need voter approval for that.
So we couldn't put a non-voter approved levy for technology in place?
No.
Okay. All right, I guess I had a misunderstanding, I appreciate, that's why we have this meeting. So I stopped running around saying that. All right, let's talk about tax increase for technology infrastructure based on the Morris Leatherman survey. If I can find it.
I think one of the things that we need to take into consideration here too is that as we're moving forward with our fall 2017 planning, there's a lot of work that needs to be done with regard to technology planning. And that's the work that, to a large extent, is going to inform what the cost of quote-unquote "doing" technology is. And when we can start to see those numbers and how they align to the curriculum outcomes we expect to see, we'll have a much clearer picture of what annual funding could or should look like.
Right.
Which then gets us closer to that conversation of how do we fund it? Right, but we, I don't, I don't know at this point, we really have the information to say exactly what we would be funding. I mean, historically, I think the technology funding here in the district has been assigned to buildings and programs. And so even trying to pull out and say, oh, here's what our per student spending is, is very difficult because that's not how it's been funded. And so we're in that change process, which makes it difficult to answer certain questions.
Okay.
I think too, if I, if I share this, looking at the agenda for tonight, there is a presentation on technology.
Mm-hmm.
What it does not include is what you're talking about, dollars and stuff.
I took now too, with them. I'll, if I don't, if I'm not able to stay for it, I will watch it tomorrow. So thanks.
The other part of the spending per student that I, that I would just caution is, is that students have different needs with technology based on what grade level they're in, what curriculum they're involved in. And so we, it's an overgeneralization at some level to say we spend X amount of dollars per student in our district. We really want to make sure that what we're doing is saying that based on whatever program that this student is engaged in, that we've got the appropriate amount of technology available to them to do whatever that program needs them to do. So it may be an overgeneralization to just say we spend, for example, $100 per student.
Right, it's a guidepost, yeah.
Okay. Well, we can follow up on that as well. And I look forward to following this as we move forward and add things. So the question from Morris Leatherman was, how much would you be willing to pay in additional property taxes in order to fund capital projects for technology infrastructure? And 39% of people said nothing. Everybody else but 2% said anywhere from $2 or over $12. So that leaves 49%, right?
I'm sorry, could you, could you share specifically the, so 39% said no.
They didn't want to give anything more.
They, so they said no.
Right.
We will not give more.
So the remaining people, 61 or minus two that said they didn't know.
Yeah.
59% of the people said they were willing to pay more money in taxes to do that, as opposed to the 27% that said they would pay for a...
Frank, in that same, wasn't there different levels of what they were willing to spend?
Yep, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12. And above 12.
And I don't remember what it was at the time, but it seems like there was something, when we started putting together our needs of what the proposal would have been that we needed, it wasn't within that range. And I, I can't speak on the fly, but I think that was part of it, was that $2 to $4 range didn't get us where we really needed to be anyway. So I think that was part of the reason why we weren't going to go for a tech levy at this time, because it wouldn't have gotten us what we needed anyway. I'd need to dig a little deeper, but I think there was a little bit more to that number.
And there might be some hesitancy then to go out and ask and get a little piece.
And not be able to...
And then sometimes your community thinks, well, we just had that tech levy and we already approved that, why are you coming back in two or three years to ask more? Sometimes that's, I know, the thinking of it.
And I think the other thing that I've taken away from Bill's work in Stillwater is he has continued to say that we are a one-question district. And if we have identified our priorities, he said, go for that. It's a one-question district, you will get a greater chance of approval if you just stick with that. And, you know, the last levy that we did was, we increased our operating and we put every ounce of blood behind that. And so that's, that's kind of what we've done.
But it's a false dichotomy.
It is 10 minutes, I'm sorry. Has anyone else joined us this evening that was not aware of the need to sign up beforehand? And would you like to sign up? No, okay, thank you.
Fred, before you leave though...
Can I have the last, since you addressed me?
Well, and I sense, we just wanted to leave it open, you know, we're still new at this and the format, and just in case somebody walked in, we wanted to give them a chance. But since we have time, if we would like to, you know, divide it equally between you and Carl, if Carl would like to come back, are you interested in?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
I'd just like a couple of minutes, so I want to answer that.
Fred, before you do that though, and I was remiss before, just give your full name and address so we have it on the record.
Fred Anderson, 9098 Ferry Falls Road, Stillwater, Minnesota.
Do we go with five for each at this point?
Okay. I'll be brief.
Let Fred take what time he needs.
So we are a one-question district, or at least that's the way it's been presented. What that question is, is a matter of contradiction, right? What it should be, I should say. It's a false dichotomy to say that it's either all or nothing, or it's, you're with us or against us. You're either for kids or against kids. There's other, to propose that you're either, there's this or that, I think there were opportunities to put something else, technology mainly, among other things, take things out, not have turf, whatever it is, whatever your special interest is, that was available in this last, in this last bond. So...
Let's clarify this. Kristin, could we pay bond money for computers and that kind of technology?
One time, and I, Fred, if I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding, what I would say, what would be, in my mind, the most advantageous for our district is to have some sort, like our operating levy, to have some sort of ongoing funding for whether it be, you know, seven years, 10 years, whatever that is, so we can keep that refreshment going. So I, so the, the machine that we used for the building bond could have put infrastructure, and it could have added, you know, computers or smart boards or whatever it is, but that would be one time, have to spend it within a certain timeframe, and that would be it. Where my recommendation would absolutely be to have ongoing cash coming in annually.
I agree. All right, last, I just want to switch gears a little bit. Thank you for, for answers on those things, I appreciate it, your time. I want to thank Krista for recording this. So I think it's really important, I want to keep that going because there's a lot of people that can't make it to meetings, and I think it's really important, especially as we move forward with more meetings around the Bold Initiative, that we record as much as possible and make it available as much as possible. So what, what are the plans? Are we gonna record, what meetings are we gonna be recording and making available? Which ones aren't we gonna?
We have the board, the board business sessions, learning sessions, and now the listening sessions that are recorded. We, we aren't doing visually the listening sessions. And we don't typically for the learning sessions, depending on where we are. But some of those, depending on what, in the past, Krista, there was something that we were talking about earlier, there was a learning session that we had...
When we did the long-range planning session, we recorded that live and also webcast that so that people, and we're talking about doing the same thing on December 17th for that learning session because we know this Bold Initiative and some of the decisions and things that are coming down the pipe, we wanted people to really be able to see and hear that conversation. But as you know, this kind of format doesn't work very well for just the setup we have here for a video recording.
Oh, yeah, I agree, I agree. No, I think just making audio available for any time that you have of people together talking about this stuff. A good example is our last, our last community meeting a couple of weeks ago. As you look across the room, I know the board is in the back, but not acting as a board capacity, but as you look across the room, it's a pretty narrow demographic for what our district represents. And I think it's unfortunate that more people don't get to hear those conversations. There's some things that aren't conducive to a recording. So if we have an exercise where we're all scribbling on post-its and things, I understand that that's not possible. But if you have, like last Thursday at the public library, if you're gonna have an opportunity where people are acting as board members in a board capacity, receiving information from our public employees, I think that's the kind of thing we should be, have, have out there and have an ability to hear. So, and if there's conversation going on, because, I mean, I don't need to say it, as you guys have said in the video, there's a lot of really big cha, sorry, big changes that are gonna happen, whether they're, you know, some people embrace them, some people won't. And people need to have that opportunity to get out there and hear about it, and then an opportunity to come talk about it and about like this. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Eddie, did you want to speak tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay.
For the afternoon.
All right, Carl, you want to come back?
Thank you.
Another concern, that's Carl Blondin again. Another concern I have was brought up by the social studies teachers at the last listening session, is they're not going to have offices in the new high school.
Is that still, I mean, aren't you meeting with them tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I was very concerned about that. One of the things you want to do is, you want to prepare kids for college. And what you have to do in a college or university is go to your professor's office and sign up for office time if you need help. And I think that's, you know, if we start treating the students like college students, they will be better prepared. And I thought, it amazed me, we're, we're spending 7.3 million on the Pony Center, we have offices for the coaches. And I don't understand why we are eliminating offices for social studies teachers, which I think are useful, because I've met with teachers at Stillwater Area High School in their offices. I like the idea. It's open, it's glass, the teacher can monitor what's going on in the classroom, yet speak confidentially with the parent. And there are times after school or during their free period, maybe there's students using the room. Those offices are very useful. And I do not understand, when this board put together the budget, why they thought it was more important to have offices for the coaches than for the teachers. I want to know what went into your thinking on that, Mike.
I can speak to that because it's not, the, first of all, the, the coaches don't have offices. And the offices that you see in the Pony Activity Center are actually for our community education, staff to be able to facilitate evening activities and things for the community to come into the school. So the, the coaches don't have offices. Part of what, and I'll let Rob and Mark comment a little bit more on, is with the social studies teachers and all of them, where we aren't going to have a situation where a teacher can't have a confidential conversation with a student or a parent. We're looking at multiple different places for kids to have experiences, learning and collaborating together, and also for teachers. And so, the social studies teachers were here at our last listening session to talk about their concern for that also. And I think, I know, I've been at several of them, there have been several meetings since then to talk about what that might really look like. And I don't know, I think Mark and Rob, tomorrow, tomorrow we have another meeting with them, right? Tomorrow afternoon?
Yeah, and one of the other points that you raised, Carl, was in terms of college and preparation for college and how a student might approach, you know, a teacher in college, via office hours and things like that, and this might be a vehicle with which to replicate that. That space will still be available. Part of what we're talking about, we're, we're closer to resolution of what that space will finally look like. But part of where we are right now, that we'll get discussed tomorrow, is the ability to still utilize that space for exactly that purpose that you spoke of, which is to have a private and confidential conversation. Teachers will still have that availability and that access to be able to do that. But part of it is taking that and turning that into a space that students can use too, and use that in a way that's very similar to the point that you raised about being more collegiate. When you look at college environments, institutions of higher learning, schools that are being designed nowadays, they're incorporating student space that allows for small group interaction, which doesn't necessarily traditionally maybe take place in a quote-unquote "traditional" classroom. But part of the, part of what we asked our architects to do was mock up what that space might look like in terms of some seating arrangements for students, which doesn't really have that accommodation right now. But also, you know, whiteboards potentially on the walls where things can get discussed and can get mapped out and problems can be solved, and much in the manner in which students collaborate together today to, to be able to do that. And they don't really have the ability to be able to do that in that space currently. So it's more a reconfiguration of how that space will look.
Okay, well Denise, that's news to me because when I was in this room earlier this year, Mr. Michael indicated that the coaches would have their own offices in the Pony Center, would not have to use the offices of the gym teachers, and that'd be a good thing. So that is something new.
No, the only, the only offices, I mean, there's two more locker rooms I'm going to add with the ninth grade coming up, but more by a teacher, so there'd be a, a space in there for supervision of the teachers.
Well, Mark, I do recall what I heard, I have a very good memory.
Right, no, I'm just saying.
This is news if it's changed. When was the change made?
I, I just say I don't recall it ever being in there.
Well, perhaps you should go back and listen to the recording of the presentation by Mr. Michael, where he indicated the coaches would have their own offices and would not have to use the offices of the fire and teachers.
Carl, I'm, we've spent another five minutes together, which is great. We do have another community member, did you come to speak? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much, Carl. If you'd like to join us up at the table.
Please give him a name and his address.
Hi. Hi. I'm Sally Doherty. I'm a parent of two elementary school students in Afton-Lakeland.
Can I just interrupt you just so that we treat people consistently?
Sure.
Um, we're, this is new for us to have this listening session. It's the four-day board meeting, and we are encouraging the community to sign up for this online, at least 48 hours ahead, just so that if you have a concern about technology, which we knew tonight, we had our technology person here. So, but we're still learning this and we welcome you here.
Sure.
We're giving everybody 10 minutes, and we do have, uh.
Great.
I love, I love, that's my job.
Sally, one more thing we need is if you give Barbara your address, or maybe you have her.
Hi, Barbara. 13575 Fortieth Street South, Afton, Minnesota, 55001. It's also Littlefoot Farm is the name of the business.
And I just want to remind you, you can use the 10 minutes as you wish. If you'd like to speak for 10 minutes, that's fine.
Okay.
If you'd like to speak for a little bit and then have questions, it's really up to you how you do the stuff.
Okay, sure.
All right.
So, I was at the first one of these forums, was it a month ago already? And I didn't know about the signup, because at that time, we didn't do it, so, so my mistake, but I think it's a good, a good approach. And when I was here last time, I was sort of trying to be very complimentary about having this forum, I think it's awesome. I'm sort of using it as a chance for me to just have a conversation with the board and maybe learn some things myself. The big rocks versus little rocks that I talked about the last time, I'm very supportive of the big rocks, the, the bond, the levy, the buildings, all of those bold, big movements that are happening, I'm very supportive of that. But I, I come here to talk about the little rock, which is, for me, Afton-Lakeland. And there has been, I'll say, good communication with me since a month ago when I came, and I'll be meeting with Bob here in a couple of weeks to go over some of the specifics. But I just thought I'd take this opportunity again to say, hey, I think Afton-Lakeland might need some special attention. Maybe it's partly because there's leadership flux. And sometimes when there's leadership flux, communication gaps occur. As a parent and, and probably many parents feel that we don't really know what's, what's happening in terms of this little rock that's maybe got momentum that's not so good year after year after year. And it used to be a star in the district. And so we're sort of, I'm looking for, hey, how do, how do I make sure that, that you all see that the momentum's not been good? And that you recognize it used to be a star? And, and maybe some things need to happen to get it back to be a star. And so the specific thing I wanted to talk about is say, hey, leadership gap seems to be more permanent now from what we gather as parents that are not, we're sort of picking up breadcrumbs, we're not really hearing directly. But apparently, there's a job posting now for the remainder of the year for principal or something like that. It would be great if you could shed a light on that and talk to the parents about what does that mean and how will we not fall further while we're dealing with that?
Um, we, Sally, there's, because that's a personnel issue, I mean, first of all, we recognize that there have been leadership gaps. And what we've been trying to do, our attempt this year to have, Kyle came down at Afton-Lakeland was not to do something that we've done in the past, where we filled in with different principals when one of our principals is on leave. So specifically, I can't comment to that, but I can comment to your concern that there needs to be some consistent leadership there. And right now, we're still in fluxes knowing exactly what might happen. And part of that is just, we're only privy to so much information also.
Sure.
So, just sharing with you that we understand that, we're committed to having long-term leadership there also, and we just are not quite where we can make some of those decisions yet. And we also know that Afton-Lakeland's been a star, and that's really what our goal is, is to have it be a star. Our students, some of their achievement rates have been falling there, and can be for a number of things.
Right.
But I think part of what we recognize as a team, and we've been looking at as a team, and Doug can speak to this a little bit more, the learning and innovation is Angela Liboni is now our, our data and assessment person, who's really working with teachers to look at specifically where are the areas of the curriculum that we need to beef up? What are the areas that are not actually curriculum-related, but are behavior supports that are needed?
Sure.
And that's where Rachel Larson comes in and is looking at what are those systems that we need to put in place there. And some of the systems that we want to be in place at all of our elementaries need to be beefed up definitely in Afton-Lakeland, we recognize that.
Um, thank you. Regarding the beefing up sort of, of those elements, is that something that is a near-term or long-term goal? Near-term being year kind of thing, long-term being more than a year?
I would say they're both.
They're both, okay.
Uh, because, I mean, we have, we've been working, like Denise had said, both Angie and Rachel have been working on, on some systems things, on the assessment and learning pieces for various parts that, that were fairly obvious to, to help support down there. And then, just having Kyle down there, he's very intuitive into kind of system stuff and, and how we're running some things for, for some of our students down there that, that need to be run. So I would say, in the short term, in communication with the staff, the staff seems to be, seem, seems to be doing fairly well with this, with what's been going on in the short term. I would say in the long term, that's always something we'll be working on, and it's just a matter of getting through this next phase to, to get those pieces put together. And as far as innovative things, that's where, where John comes in down there on the technology side for some of the, because there's some, it, it's the gamut, right, with each of our schools, as, as we look at those individual needs that schools have. And now that John's on board, those are things that we've talked about, what, what can be done specific to Afton, just on the technology side, to help out the system.
Okay. Thank you. If I could make a, a request or suggestion, I think some of what, what you're able to say about the flux and the leadership is still important to say, even though some of it is, is not for public consumption. I think that, right now, I'll speak for myself, it's tempting to speak for parents in general, but I'll speak for myself. Leadership flux usually has cracks, you know, things that, that don't go the way you want because you don't have the passion, the energy of the leader that's present.